All right, we're gonna get ready to start. I'm gonna do something just a little bit different. I'm gonna ask the camera people to run the cameras to start this meeting. I'm first gonna ask everyone to stand if we give a moment of silence for our city councilperson and former clerk. He lost his son yesterday, and we all grew up with his son, and most of us was mother figure to his son, so we just wanna give him that respect, Mr. James Pulliam's son, Adrian Pulliam. Thank you. Will you all please remain standing as Pastor Jeff Crockett, will he come and give us our evening in prayer, would be followed by our pledge of allegiance by Ms. Patricia Lane?
May we bow our heads in prayer. Mighty God, we just want to thank you. We just wanna thank you for this day. We wanna thank you for the blessings we've already received from on this morning to where we are now. And we wanna thank you for the fresh grace and mercies that are new to us every morning when we rise up. And Lord, we realize that without you, we're nothing. And we wanna thank you, Lord, for this city, and we wanna thank you for the leaders of this city, as they are gathered in this room today, God, by the multiple types, Lord, from our mayor to the alderman, to every staff member, to your sons and daughters that care enough about this city, that they're here in this room today. Lord, we just give you thanks for them. We thank you for your hand of protection that's been upon them. Lord, we thank you for the employees of this city. We thank you for keeping them safe, especially those, God, that labor hard for our protection and for our safety. We ask you, Lord, the things we may take for granted, let us not do that. Let's be ever thankful, God, that we hold them before you, because you are their safety, their strength, and their shield. Now, in this room today, Lord, we invite your presence in, and we ask you that you would just establish the spirit of wisdom in this house. As these men and women gather today, God, to discuss the business of this city that not only affects this city, but this county and this state, we ask for wisdom, and we ask for unity that only you can give and only you can do. We invite you in, and we say have your way. In the name of the Lord Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Amen.
Praise.
Yeah, you can.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every day just as law.
I'm going to call this order, this is a meeting to order. Ms. City Clerk, will you call the row, please?
Mayor McClendon.
Present.
City Attorney Stevenson.
Here.
City Treasurer Souter Jr., Councilor Bruce.
Here.
Councilor Katz.
Here.
Councilor Crum.
Here.
Councilor Harris.
Here.
Councilor Holt.
Here.
Councilor Hutchinson.
Here.
Councilor Mohammed.
Present.
Councilor Monday.
Here.
Councilor Murray.
Here.
Councilor Willis.
Here.
We have ten out of ten present. We have a call. Have you all looked over the bids at this time?
Yes, I got mine off of the.
If everything's okay, can I get a motion in second to send back the proper perspective?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
opposed? We send the bids back. Was there any corrections to the minutes?
Motion to approve this minute.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
opposed? Minutes are approved. We had no old business. Ms. Mohammed?
Yes, sir, I'd like for oh one, oh two, I would like to entertain a motion that oh one, oh two, and oh three be read by title only.
Can I get a second?
So moved.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
opposed? The city attorney, oh one?
Oh one is an ordinance making the office of the mayor of the city of West Memphis, Arkansas, full-time, establishing a salary for the position therefore and for other purposes.
While we on oh one, could we, we need to make that. Can I get a motion in second to amend the full-time, because the mayor is already full-time?
So moved.
Yeah, we gonna strike that language.
I'm suggesting amend the title, but I can bring it out now.
Okay.
An ordinance establishing a salary for the position of mayor and for other purposes.
All right. Can I get a motion in second?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
opposed?
Is that for?
That's the new.
The new, okay.
So it just read. So see, it turns out, can read it for the first time?
Yeah.
All right. Oh two?
Oh two is an ordinance to establish new compensation for council members of the city of West Memphis and for other purposes.
It's read for the first time, but it'll be back in two weeks for a second reading. Oh three?
Oh three is an ordinance waiving competitive bidding for aerial, oh sorry. Competitive bidding for aerial spraying, ground spraying, and other mosquito control efforts and for other purposes.
Could I get a motion in second to suspend the rules and places on the second reading?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
opposed? I'm just bringing it two times, then next week we'll come with that direction.
This is an ordinance waiving competitive bidding for aerial spraying, ground spraying, and other mosquito control efforts and for other purposes.
It's read for a second time, and then two weeks we'll come back, and we'll make that budget change that we need to make and to make it correct. Our permission request, we're gonna go back down to permission to accept a high tower improvement project for 3.1 million. Director Parker.
Like I said, gave you a handout of what the project entails and what it's, the scope of it. We tasked the architects and project managers to come down, because the initial bids we got, one was over four million, other one was close to four million, it's 3.9, and what we did was kinda did some value-added, or value-taking away engineering, to see what could we do without that would still give us a project that was something that we could be proud of, and something that would enhance the beauty of that park and that area of town. And that's what they did. They trimmed about, close to a million dollars off of it, and you could see the different line items that that, and what they value, what that came in at. So, you know, and like I said, I know the initial start of this project, it was some pricing, but, you know, we started this project actually two years ago. So just to let you know, I mean, and with all that's happened, you had to expect that it was gonna be some type of increase, you know, with that. And also, you know, right now, you know, it's, we need to make a decision if we're gonna do something or not, because you saying that if we do something, is it, you know, something that the cities, you know, get this value for, or is it worth it? But to do nothing, what is that worth? So that's what you're tasked with. And now, I'll just open up, and, you know, if you have any questions?
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
How long, and I was discussing this with Ms. Council Hutchinson over here, how long has this park been brought up before the council? This is not the first time, evidently. So how long has this park been brought up before the council to do something?
Since I've been here.
Amen.
Since you been here?
Yeah.
And since I've been on council.
All parks, we've brought up doing something to all parks, and we managed to do some things. We've replaced all the playground equipment.
Tilden Rogers have never had anything done to it since, and I live on 4th Street and pass it every day, never had anything done to it, never.
And like I said, that, all parks except that one has been equipped with new playground equipment. Grants have been used on Horton Park, and also the park on, by the library, and like I said, every one of them have new equipment as far as site furniture, but Hightower, nothing has been done to that. And I look back, I think 1986 was the last time some new playground equipment had put in there from the records that were in the Parks Office.
If I may interject, just to add to that, Council Crum, we did discuss that, even so before your time and my time, Council James and myself gave fifty, they were, I think each park, this was maybe seven years ago, each park was granted funds.
Yeah, that's where the playground equipment came from.
Right, right, right. But what I'm trying to say, to add.
Right, well, nothing done to Hightower.
We, myself and Council Pulliam at the time, the 50,000 that should have went in our award, we gave our 50,000 to Franka Park for their updates and upgrades, and this was many years ago. So to interject with what you were saying, and add to your question and answer that, it's been going on for a while, and it's always, in my opinion, put off, put off for some reason, so I did wanna just add that.
And I mean, it's the center of the city, and guys, could y'all grant me a little leeway? I want Richie to come up here, because Richie, he's one of the engineers and architect that first looked at this park, and the things that he said about this park just amazed me, and he was wondering why we hadn't did anything to it since then. And Richie not from around here, so that's what made him wonder why such a jewel hadn't been touched. But Richie, could you come just interject?
I'm Richie Smith, park designer, landscape architect. We might be closer to this room than many of you. We're just in the Cotton Exchange Building in downtown Memphis, so I can get over here pretty quick. In our work with parks throughout Arkansas, Tennessee, I can just tell you, in my forty-six year career, one of the great joys we've been involved in, occasionally with architects and engineers, but as landscape architects, is looking at urban areas that have opportunities for green space, for all the obvious benefits, and many of those are already parks, but they're in terrible condition, and our history's kind of had a firm of taking parks that are just dark, shabby, unkempt, possibly dangerous, and transforming, and people just are amazed, they, sometimes they aren't even aware that that was a park, because it became unfriendly, uninviting, and Hightower is an example where there's just little initiatives after it was first built, where good intentions, you add some benches, you add some trees, you add a little play equipment, but it's never orchestrated in a complete comprehensive park design. And so one of the things that we've looked at, and Lat and I have been working on this for four or five years, before the bond issue was passed, with Tilden Rogers and Hightower, looking at Hightower, there were two impressions. One, almost everything has to go, except the senior center and some of the mature trees. And the second thing that you all have done was a phenomenal move to extend the park to Broadway, so it's not behind what were thriving retail businesses that have gone down in economic value, and you've got blight next to a park. And that expansion does two things. It gives the park a window onto your most important main street, which helps the street and helps the park, and secondly, you got enough acreage now to put an amphitheater. Otherwise, it'd be very difficult to do that without really taking out big trees and waiting for a generation. And I just wanna mention, you know, we're certainly available to answer questions. There's a lot of details in these projects, and I don't think you wanna have time to go into this, but the, we had two bids. The low bid was $4 million. We've been, we were tasked by you and others to work with the apparent low bidder, to see if we could get it down to $3 million. We've done that, but in doing so, there are thirteen items on your list that we have to take out. And I just wanna make a quick comment, that you're taking out, in those thirteen items, a lot of the value and the experience and the recreational amenity of a park. What you will get for $3 million is cleaning up all the blight, extending it to Broadway, so there's a big, beautiful, green expanse. You get a nice new restroom for the park amphitheater, and for the underserved restrooms in the senior center. You get a beautiful amphitheater on Broadway, and some of this is on the, on the plan. And you get a nice walkway system that goes through the park, connecting the amphitheater to the restroom and so forth, and you preserve the nice, mature trees, but that's it. It becomes kind of a blank slate. So just for what it's worth, the design team was brainstorming to think, gee, out of these thirteen items, if there was a decision to add something more over 3 million, what would be the most bang for buck? For the community, for the kids, for, for the neighborhood, and we thought the playgrounds, of which there are two, they're kind of linked together, but you could phase them, and those add up to about $257,000. So we were thinking, you know, perhaps optimistically, if you could get 257 odd thousand, plus maybe a little extra for some new trees or a few benches, that wouldn't be much, but it would at least create a park that's not just lawn and trees, you know, waiting for things. Now, in this scenario, we're taking out the pavilion, we're taking out the basket, the small basketball court, other paving that relates to it. We're taking out all the furniture, all the trees, the irrigation, it's, I don't wanna go on in detail about what you have, but I'm just saying, we're, we remain bullish and enthusiastic, because in my career, I've seen what this can do when you take a really shabby green space and enhance it. It's just, it's a value add across the board, and, you know, we're hopeful that you might move forward with perhaps the playground or some of the amenities that I think would have the most benefit for the most people, but we're, I'll just stop and glad to answer questions or sit back, but I appreciate the opportunity.
I do have one question, sir, if you don't mind. We're taking out all of those amenities, which most certainly would enhance the park's beauty so, so much. Do you think that futuristically, we may be able to add some of those? I know we usually get playground equipment, Mr. Parker, every so often. Right now, I think what you're giving us is like a basic plan that we can add on to later on, if the inflation comes down, or we, or if city council can find the monies to add all of the amenities in that you're talking about taking out, is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
That's gonna turn into my budget wish list.
Okay.
After this. Basically, those items will go on a budget wish list each year to try to fund.
Just for example, you can add a pavilion later. We have a shade structure over the soundboard canopy for the amphitheater. You could add that later, it's not a high priority. You've got Sunny Weems Basketball Court, full court nearby. You know, this park had a basketball court, it was not a full court. It never was used much, even when it was, had goals and rims, so we thought that's the easiest thing to take out right off the bat. But again, if you wanted to bring that back, just like Councilwoman Mohammed said, you can, you can plug those back in, just like you can plant trees, or along the walk, you can add the beautiful benches, picnic tables, there's a drinking fountain, those could be plugged in anytime.
Okay. Based on all that you have explained to us, and I think it's really clear, and as other council members were disclosing today, we have really beaten this horse, dead horse, for a long, long time. So based on what you're telling us today, I'd like to make a motion that we move on accepting the Hightower Improvement Project bid for the 3.1 million dollars.
Second.
Mayor, may I ask one question before we?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. Do you foresee with this pavilion, Mr. Parker, and Jim Jackson may be involved in this one, do you perceive this being a, at some time being a revenue-producing part?
Absolutely, that's what the, 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 to lease down.
I know what it's for, but do you foresee?
That's what we're foreseeing for, is to make revenue off of some of the amenities in this park, absolutely, yes, sir. And just like we rent, you know, the B, the Tilden Rogers and other, like, no, we rent the, we rent that B.
Excuse me, we have a motion in second. I just do want, you all, I'm gonna say this, and I want they just add this, whatever decision you all go on. You approve at 3.1 million, but actually what the bid came in was at 3, 3 million and 48,000, so you got almost 950,000. So the, the, else the playground that we, that if you all decide, you have, you have that money. So we got a motion in second. I'm gonna ask the city clerk to please call the row.
Councilor Bruce?
Yes.
Councilor Katz?
No.
Councilor Crum?
Pass.
Councilor Harris?
Yes.
Councilor Holt?
Yes.
Councilor Hutchinson?
Yes.
Councilor Mohammed?
Yes.
Councilor Monday?
Yes.
Councilor Murray?
Yes.
Councilor Willis?
All right, we have seven yeses, two passes, and one no. The motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Like I said, thank you, Councilman, and also be on the lookout, because now that we've done this, we will start our planning for the Tilden Rogers phase of it, so when you guys get ready to meet, hopefully, the next couple of weeks, if you guys wanna put together a meeting, but we, I'm sure they're ready, because like I said, we've been tasking us for so long, so just about two weeks, we'll have a meeting to get started on that phase of it, the planning product.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Also, before we move on to committee reports, I'm gonna ask that 70706 South 20th Street, if you all will make a motion in second to place that on the condemnation list.
Apologies, what was the address again?
700 South 20th Street and 706 South 20th Street. We just moved from 700 South 20th Street just the other day, over 250 towers that were used completely, that's a dumping ground in the houses, it's inhabitable on 20th Street. So you wanna get rid of that property, and you'll have that whole lot, from the whole 700 block will be cleared for possibly future development for me and one that may want to.
Do you wanna put it, put it on the agenda?
Yeah, I wanna add it. Will you make that motion, Council Crum?
I'll make the motion that we demo those two properties that the mayor was talking about.
We need to add it to the agenda.
Okay. I'll make the motion that we will add the permission request.
You just add the condemnation to the agenda, then we get, can I get a second to add the condemnation?
So moved.
Second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's added. Now, can I get a motion in second to, with 700 South 20th Street and 706 South 20th Street on the condemnation list?
So moved.
Make a motion to put those on the demolition list.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Thank you all.
Can I ask you a question here? Before we go into the committee reports?
Sure.
Can we go back up to the ordinances and let the people know what these increases are, will be?
Sure.
Just so that everybody knows what we're looking at here.
You want me to do it, or you wanna? No, I really want you to do it, because I see a lot of people saying that, in your war, saying that you not communicating with them, so if you give it to them, then they actually hear.
I'm not communicating?
Yeah, they getting wrong, they getting, they getting wrong information, so.
I've been communicating. My phone is out of minutes, by the way.
Okay, say again, say again. No, I'm not lying. I'm not lying, so I appreciate that you don't use that, because I got the proof right here in my phone, on people in your community. So show respect when you come to the council, please. So, excuse, you said what?
Did you say, did you, did you curse, did you curse in this council room? All right, but don't, respect, you, you right now, you are not supposed to be talking, you a visitor. Don't curse in our, in our council.
Do we have options here?
So would, would you expand a little?
I would tell, I explain what this is. The council salary is to be moved up from 13,000 to 15,600. That's 13,200, where it's at, up to 15,600. The mayor's salary is to be moved up from 87,000 to 104. That's 87,000 to 104.
Thank you.
And you also, and your council people has the evidence of showing what city our size make, what they should be making, and the list of all the cities of the same size makes here in the city of West Memphis, or throughout the state of Arkansas. So you have all of those.
And that, that's appreciated.
No, no, let me finish, because I want them to get all this too. And if you see a city that's capping, that's 20,000, 26,000 population, same as the city of West Memphis, is making 109,000 as mayor. So this is where these numbers came from, is what the city council salary, so please, we want everyone to be able to see this, and the one who need a copy, we'll make sure we provide that to you.
If I may ask, that we add to the agenda, the, the demand to pay request that city attorney needs to disclose?
Sure. Take a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
All right, thank you. We had a pre-litigation demand letter that was sent to me from a lawyer. When I say pre-litigation, I mean that there has been no lawsuit filed. The demand is to prevent a lawsuit. The demand is for $150,000. Until we have a lawsuit filed, we don't have coverage from the municipal league. What, what normally happens with the municipal league is, when we have a lawsuit filed, we send it to them, they accept it, and then they accept it with what's called reservation of right. And what that means is, they have the right not to provide coverage based upon the facts that they discover based upon their investigation. Normally, in every instance, we are covered, but they do make that investigation. However, if there's not a lawsuit filed, there is no coverage. So if we paid the, or paid the demand, accepted the demand, then that money would come without coverage from the city. So what I would like to entertain is a motion to either accept, reject, or counteroffer this demand. We were given until, until tomorrow, we didn't have a meeting scheduled until today, that's why I haven't brought it up until now. We'll say also that the county was involved as well, they've already had the demand made upon them in the same letter. It's based upon an incident where there was a search warrant executed on a apartment, which was the wrong apartment. And so that is the main issue. Any other questions, I'll be happy to try to answer.
I'd like to make the motion to reject.
Second, second.
We have a motion in second to reject the offer. Will you call the Roman City Clerk?
Councilor Bruce?
Yes.
Councilor Katz?
Yes.
Councilor Crum?
Yes.
Councilor Harris?
Yes.
Councilor Holt?
Yes.
Councilor Hutchinson?
Yes.
Councilor Mohammed?
Yes.
Councilor Monday?
Yes.
Councilor Murray?
Yes.
Councilor Willis?
Yes.
We have ten that voted no, so the offer is rejected.
Thank you.
All right. We're gonna go down to committee reports. Utility?
Yes, the utility didn't meet on February the ninth. There were no recordable injuries, no lost time accidents in the month of December. There were no new hires, or regs, and nations in the month of January. There was approval to purchase three vehicles, one which was damaged by somebody, don't know who. The vehicle was at the employee's home, who was on call, so it was exactly where it needed to be, but somebody came down the road and just wiped it out, so insurance company told it out, and they're replacing it. That concludes the report.
All right. I know you say you come back next with Public Works, at the next meeting.
Yes, Public Works, may I? Yes, Public Works met, uh, again, there was basically five, or four new committee members, I think, and the conversation was very, very general into what they were wanting to, to look at for the upcoming year, and we'll be bringing you a full report at the next meeting.
Pollings?
Yes, sir, the police commission met Monday, February sixth, our very first meeting, so we didn't have an agenda to go by. It was, um, quite lengthy, because we talked about some of the same things repeatedly, but I believe we got some results from the meeting. First of all, uh, selected for chairperson, uh, was city councilwoman Lorraine Muhammad. Our date and times for the meeting will be the first Monday of each month at twelve noon. Some things we discussed were tractor-trailer rigs parked in neighborhoods, cars parked on the side of the road, uh, and on the sidewalk, basketball goes on the sidewalk and in the streets. There was much discussion on each of the above topics. The commission, the police department, and code enforcement officers will be working to correct these problems. And that's the synopsis of that report.
Thank you. Ms. Muhammad, did you wanna move forward Main Street?
Yes, sir, this is my very first time serving on Main Street, and I'm very so delighted to, uh, be a part of that particular commission. I serve as liaison. We met on Friday, February tenth, uh, at ten a.m. Ms. Abernathy is sitting back there, she is the director of Main Street. I did a little synopsis, but I'm gonna read the minutes that you brought to me, Ms. Abernathy, so you all just bear with me. Deborah Abernathy, Main Street Director's Report. At this time, she is entering all pertinent information into a data system called Maestro, is that right? She will be attending a workshop in Little Rock on January nineteenth, this was last, I'm reporting January, January nineteenth, um, I guess she's already done that, is that right? Following up with the bricks at the water tower, a brick layer is scheduled to place them when the ground is drier. We can then set a date for the reveal. You all know where the big water tower is, this is what that's talking about. The Christmas wreaths will be thrown away because of age. Replacements are too expensive. The suggestion is to have Christmas banners printed, uh, at J R and K on every other pole. Grant funds can be used for this purchase. Lights might, might need to be refurbished as well. Greg Bowden at Broadway Art and Decor had a successful open house. Tyrone McRight will be finishing his exterior painting as soon as the weather permits. Mr. Can, John? Chan? Mr. Chan at Save a Bug would like to apply for a grant. Uh, and Mrs. Chan at Save a Bug would like to apply for a grant for her roof, that building has been there for a long time. If you want any oldie but goodies, go in there, you'll find it. Also, there was a discussion regarding a park grant on Main Street. Rent and insurance would have to be considered for long term. A T-Mobile grant was discussed, uh, and I think that's, uh, regarding the Bollinger Building, which is the old city hall, courthouse, and police department combined. And I was telling everybody I was aging myself out. Tilden Rogers gave me my very first job at West Memphis City Hall as his receptionist, and I remember every single body. I haven't forgotten any of their names, I know them all. A discussion about a food truck Friday in conjunction with Chamber at the Bollinger Built, Built, Bollinger Circle once a month. I think if we get that going, we're gonna talk about getting a food truck there. Catherine Suda is willing to start the history series about Broadway to be on Facebook with regular interviews. She also suggested a walking tour. Gary Meisner has been approved to be the new co-signer for Main Street Chats. All new fundraising ideas are welcomed by anyone, and the meeting was adjourned. That was our January's report. We'll hear February's on the next month, and I do have it for you. That is my reports.
Thank you. Uh, Chamber?
The Chamber, uh, met on, uh, February the eighth. Counselor Muhammad and myself were there. They were promoting the, uh, community story by highlighting the impactful community members and the workforce development programs, uh, revolved around the banquet, which is next Tuesday, February the twenty-third, from six o'clock, it's at the Civic Center. The keynote spector, speaker will be, uh, Robbie Brock, he's the CEO of the Arkansas Talk Business and Politics. If you would like to have a ticket, and you haven't reserved your ticket yet, you could call, uh, the, uh, Chamber of Commerce office and reserve a ticket, the number is seven three five eleven thirty-four. Uh, and, uh, that concludes that report, and the Air, Airport Commission canceled or, or, um, postponed their meeting due to the inclement weather this morning, back till February the twenty-third at the same time.
Okay.
That concludes my two reports.
Personnel?
Yes, sir, personnel met, um, on yesterday, February the fifteenth. A full report, mayor, would be given if, with your permission, on our next meeting. Uh, Mr. Rose and Mrs. Cohen want to give, uh, important highlights from that meeting, so I would, I would like, if you, with your permission, you give that full report next meeting.
Okay, thank you, mayor.
Thank you.
Bring it up. That all the commission means. Also, I wanted to bring up something else, uh, our, listed department with our sanitation department, I think has been doing an outstanding job, and I know actually we took care of that issue on Thirteenth Street for Councilwoman Hutchinson, as well as we, uh, took care of that issue for you, uh, Dr. Bruce, on the end of Monroe, as well as, like I said, they removed two hundred and fifty tires off that seven hundred South, um, Twentieth Street, and they cleaned up through the city, they just cleaned up Eastwood. If any council person may have a, a area within their ward, please give with me so I can get the, uh, little department, uh, as well with the inmates out to help get that area cleaned up for you, so please, if you got an area, let me know. Also, um, I want to inform you all too, that Steve Jones is going to Atlanta, and hopefully, with his meeting this Monday, he would be steps closer to getting, uh, nice, smaller restaurant component back to West Memphis that we have gotten a lot of comments about, so I, I thank him, and I just want you all to know what he was doing, and sometimes we may not necessarily always see what one another is doing, but he's definitely working hard to make sure that come back home to West Memphis. All right, I'm gonna go move to appointments.
Miss, uh, my permission request for my charity days, can I add it to the agenda?
Yeah, you can go ahead, I can put that, that's fine.
Okay, um, so am I asking for, first I'm gonna ask for permission for my charity days, and then would I just requested a?
I'll make a motion, we add that to the agenda.
So moved.
All pay, bye?
Aye.
Oppose?
Thank you, council and, uh, mayor. I am asking for five hundred dollars to be given to the First Baptist Church Scholarship Fund, five hundred. First Baptist on Twelfth Street Scholarship.
First missionary Baptist.
Excuse me, First Missionary.
Well, you know, we got two First Baptists.
Okay, well, get me together, First, right, First Missionary. The good, okay, uh, and then I want four hundred and fifty dollars to go to Bragg Elementary. That's four hundred and fifty go to, to go to Bragg Elementary, so that'll be a total of nine fifty of my money for now. Thank you so much. Thank you, mayor, thank you, council.
Can I get a motion to second to approve?
So moved.
All pay, bye?
Aye.
It's approved.
Thank you.
Then we'll go down to appointments, you know, we have, uh, reappointment for Frank Wagner to the A and P Commission, his term has expired, so, uh, we have two council members that's on that board, uh, Councilman Murray and Councilman Monday, and, um, first, do we do a motion to second to?
So moved.
Uh, will you call the roll?
Are we reappointing Mr. Wagner?
Well, if you all want to.
This is what, this is what a motion is for.
This is two, reappoint?
Yes, this is a reappoint. All right.
Counselor Bruce?
No.
Counselor Cat?
Yes.
Counselor Crum?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
No.
Counselor Holt?
Yes.
Counselor Hutchinson?
No.
Counselor Muhammad?
Um, I'm kinda confused, pass.
Counselor Monday?
No.
Counselor Murray?
No.
Counselor Willis?
Yes.
Five yeses.
I, I see, may I?
He said five, no, four, four. Four, five, one fails for motion, fails majority.
All right, it fails, we had four no's and five yeses and one pass, so, it was still passing on.
I, I'd like to ask a question, did we get any other applications for this particular?
Um, no, yeah, it, it have never been, uh, put out to do it.
We don't get applications for this position?
We, we, since you all know, the, uh, divided with greens back.
I was confused if we had any other, any other.
They were opening up, correct.
Well, the, what happens is the commission has the, uh, appointment, and then the council approves or not, so the commission, A and P Commission, will present another person, if they choose to do that, and then the council will vote on it at that time.
But it is strictly A and P who has the authority.
Well, they have, to make, to make the, to, to make the appointment, and then you approve it or not.
All right, that appointment's failed. We have next our, uh, presentations, and we have one that, uh, I'm very fond of, and Ms. Muhammad, I'm gonna turn this over to you to let you move forward and lead us in our Black History Program.
Are you ready, little Joe? Of course, I'm very, very excited, um, to, to host this little mini Black History Program once again here at the West Memphis City Hall. We've been doing this now for about fifteen, sixteen, close to twenty years, and each year it has been just so wonderful, and if I can just make somebody happy, that just thrills my soul. I tell everybody, I blush at receiving, but I'm just so elated at giving. So, this year, we, we only have, not only, we have three wonderful women. You may say, three, we'll be out here in just a few minutes, no, these women are so phenomenal, and their bios are so beautiful. We're just gonna take our time and just let everybody listen to how wonderful and how beautiful these mighty Black women of valor really are. They are, some of them you may not even know that they are this intense in what they do. But we're gonna get started, first of all, if we can, uh, ask Ms. Patricia to Tom, and this is something that, that I, if you want to read it there or come up here, do we have a microphone for this, for this area right here?
She wanna sit here?
If not, don't worry about it.
Ms. Patricia? Would you like?
And of course, because of Black History and all the contributions that has been made, it's so possible, it had, it has made it possible for us to be sitting here today. Black History made it possible for me to have been on this council seat all of these years. Black History and the contributions made it possible for me, as a young girl, fresh out of business college, to land a job at West Memphis City Hall, not knowing that years down the line, I would be sitting right here in this place where I once worked, in this particular building as well. So, Black History is, is just not Black History, but Black History is American history, because if you read and study, just about everything on the face of this earth was some kind of way or the other created by a Black person. Even the traffic light, that you have to stop and go, a Black person. Blood plasma, a Black person. Peanut butter, which I love, a Black person. Just think about the history and all that the African Americans have contributed to America, especially since we were brought over to America against our wills as slaves, and went through so very, 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 very much torture. And that's what really gets me emotional, when I see the Black communities running down and, and, and in such bad states, if only they knew what we had to go through to get to where we are today. So, I'm very thankful for these three young ladies. I asked Mayor McClain, I said, do we have a young man who's done anything these three young ladies has done? He said, uh, no, uh, I don't think so. So, we're gonna start with Ms. Doramel Woodard, if you'll come forward, if you have guests. We're gonna ask Ms. Patricia to read her bio, you all, please listen to this beautiful young lady. I guess.
I'm very honored to have been asked to read this. I'll tell you a little thing about this amazing woman. Doramel D. Woodard is the daughter of the late Clara Nell Hopkins and James Woodard of Live Oak, Florida. Her family migrated to West Memphis, Arkansas in nineteen seventy-five. As a child, she watched her father operate a small business, and her mother kept detailed financial books. Her father was an entrepreneur, and her mother was involved in many community awareness programs. One of them was Get Out the Vote, each one, and the other one was Each One Teach One Program. A member of the NAACP, a volunteer with tutoring programs, just to name a few. Her parents were a big influence in her life. Her mother informed her that surrounding does not determine where she can go in life. Ms. Woodard finished high school at West Memphis High School in nineteen eighty-one. She also attended Lemoine Owen College. Doramel has four children and five grandchildren, which she considers to be the love of her life. Ms. Woodard finished high school, oh, I'm sorry, I'm repeating myself. Ms. Woodard's professional achievements include working with large corporations such as Memphis Light, Light Gas and Water, Methodist Hospital, H and R Block, and FedEx, where she excelled at each of them, each job that was given her. In twenty oh-two, she decided to leave the corporate world behind and begin pursuing her dream as her own boss. She helped create O.C.'s Gift Box, a ladies' clothing boutique in Mar, in Marana, Arkansas. Later, she started PFA staffing, hiring many people in the West Memphis, Arkansas, and Memphis, Tennessee area. During the construction of the FedEx Forum, Ms. Woodard was called upon to provide workers to help finish those projects. Ms. Woodard learned early in life from her mother the importance of being a good citizen and to find ways to give back to her community. In addition to being a faithful church member of Mount Olive Missionary Baptist Church in West Memphis, she also started the Low Income Tax Clinic, where she worked with the Internal Revenue Service to provide free tax service to low-income people seeking help resolving federal tax, uh, disputes. This service helped more than three, three thousand five hundred people to resolve tax issues with the IRS at no cost to that taxpayer. She is also the co-founder of the United Neighborhood Improvement Nonprofit Organization, U N I, which offers family support to children and senior citizens in the east Arkansas region. Following in her mother's footsteps, she continues her outreach and community involvement. Doramel's willingness to help anybody in need has earned her the respect and admiration of many. In twenty sixteen, Doramel started the Tax Clinic located at six oh four North Missouri Street in West Memphis. She employs fifteen seasonal employees and four full-time employees throughout the year. Her client list contains over fourteen hundred taxpayers. Providing top-notch tax services is only one part of her mission at the Tax Clinic. Each year, she selects two to three young people to teach the importance of strong work ethics, commitment to their job, and office etiquette. Her focus is to prepare young people for the many challenges they must likely will face in the office work environment. I introduce to you Doramel Woodard.
This is the award, this, this is Black History Month twenty twenty-three, Mighty Woman of Valor Award, presented to Doramel D. Woodard, CEO, the Tax Clinic, and appreciation and recognition for your.
In appreciation and recognition for your loyal service, commitment, and dedication to providing top-notch tax service to the citizens of West Memphis, Arkansas. Thank you for your legacy and for being a conqueror. Mayor Marco McClinton, West Memphis City Council Members, presented to you Thursday, February sixteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you all.
I didn't hear you get a...
No.
Words?
I'm speechless, God. I mean, nothing I really could say. I'm so appreciative, very thankful, and honored to receive this.
Turn around and see.
And it will go on my wall.
Um, this recipient is the lady that I met, uh, who she came before a city council member to ask for something that we were, um, discussing for her building. And I was just so very, very impressed with her. And as I do these, I always acknowledge God in all of my ways and let him direct my path. And I asked him, how should I do this? What should I do? The time was going very late and I knew I had to do something. So she was the first person that God gave me to honor, then the next person and the next one. So we're going to ask Brother Mary if he would come and read this for Ms. Serena Curtis. Ms. Curtis? You want to bring someone up with you or you want to... Whatever you want to do. Did you bring everybody with you? All of West Memphis came, huh? Ms. Serena Curtis.
Ms. Serena Curtis, Curtis Construction. Serena Curtis, CEO. Serena Curtis, West Memphis native and grad- graduate of West Memphis High School and former Gatorade All-American athlete, class of nineteen eighty-nine. She found the Curtis Cleaning twenty-two years ago, which involved into Curtis Concrete Stains. With an insatiable desire to better herself, Curtis became general contractor and founded Curtis Construction LLC seventeen years ago. Curtis is a general con- general contractor with an unlimited license in three states, Arkansas, Tennessee, and Mississippi. Curtis Construction specializes in commercial construction. An outstanding athlete, Curtis is not afraid of competing, especially in a tough male, predominantly male environment. Pass off to you. In twenty nineteen, she received Best General Contracting in Commercial Construction by the Black Business Association of Memphis and voted her the best general contractor. She was nominated for the Best General Contractor for the R.R. Robert S. Church Award in twenty twenty due to Minority Business Association in Memphis, Tennessee. Though Serena's heart and commitment to excellence, Curtis has built a company that consistently delivers quality projects on time and within budget. Recent projects include West Memphis Courthouse, Fire Stations Two and Three, Baptist Memorial, West Memphis, Shelby County Health Department, UT Medical Center, UT Dentistry, Mark Tree Elementary and High School. Curtis is also noted for competing, uh, completing her largest single project to date, the Ozarks Medical Center, a hundred and thirty thousand square feet.
My senior hour of her story, we should be standing now, look at that. And those are your stories.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Black History Month twenty twenty-three Mighty Woman of Valor Award. Presented to Serena Curtis, CEO, Curtis Construction Company. In appreciation and recognition for your loyal service and love for the building and beautification of the city of West Memphis, Arkansas and surrounding areas through your general contracting and commercial construction skill. Thank you for not being afraid of competing in a tough, predominantly male environment and for you being more than a conqueror. Mayor Marco McClinton, West Memphis City Council Members. And I would like to say of Ms. Curtis, uh, she just doesn't own the company. She gets out there down and dirty and does a lot of the work herself. She built your building?
Built my building.
She built her building. And see, this is what we, this is one of the things that we are really honoring today, not just the lady, but they build their structures from ground up. So that's why I asked Mayor McClintock, is there any other black male who has done that in the city of West Memphis? And he could not give me an answer. So these women, they are extremely, extremely talented. Ms. Curtis, thank you so much for all of your contributions. Let's give her another round of applause.
Thank you very much. I want to thank God who, uh, called me by name in my mother's womb. Um, my mother who couldn't be here today. Uh, my youngest son, Brandon, is here.
All right, Brandon.
Yes. Uh, and I couldn't do anything that I do without my amazing staff. Ms. Mary Miller, she's not here tonight. She's not here. She's the oldest employee that I have. She's been with me longer. The next person would be Antonio Tinojero, my general superintendent. The next person would be Saul Escalante.
Mr. Escalante?
Yeah. Then we have Amin. Amin. We have George. George, we have Ismail. Chio. We have Kia. Talia. Sharonay. Christopher. Renee is not here. Satriano is not here and neither is Ms. Mary. But I couldn't do what I do without my amazing staff. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
And we, we have to talk about her building there on Missouri. Have you completed it yet?
We're getting close.
We're getting close.
We've been building hospitals for other customers and so our work, uh, fell behind, but we're catching it up and we should be done and completed in a couple of months, ready to move in.
So these women are really women of valor. They're just not ordinary. They are extraordinary. The last lady, I guess I'll read hers. She has so much on here, I couldn't get anybody to do it at the last minute. I said, well, I guess I'll read it. Ms. Susan Moore Jones, Dr. Susan Moore.
Dr. Susan. Dr. Susan.
She is not certainly a phenomenon. Will you have this for me, please? Susan Moore Jones, M.D., CEO of East Arkansas Family Health. Dr. Susan Moore Jones may be the CEO of a community health center, a physician, the governor-appointed member of two state commissions, a wife and mother, but she's still Little Sue. To her mother and her, I'm sure her father and everyone who loves her. She credits her mother, who first encouraged her to take on the healthcare industry. My mother would always tell me, if I can be a nurse, then you certainly can be a doctor. Way to go, mom. Little Sue received a Bachelor of Science degree in Biology in nineteen eighty-seven from Dillard University, New Orleans, Louisiana. A Doctorate of Medicine from the University of Arkansas for Medical Science, Little Rock, Arkansas in nineteen ninety-three. And Certification of Diplomat from the American Board of Internal Medicine. Dr. Jones originally came to West Memphis in nineteen ninety-six. Who brought you here? Mr. Steve Jones. I'm just teasing with you. As part of the National Health Service Corp. Loan Repayment Plan, but chose to stay in the area long after her loans were repaid because of the healthcare needs. Dr. Jones now spends her days as Chief Executive Officer of a busy community health center, East Arkansas Family Health Center, overseeing a staff of two hundred and fourteen, including six physicians. What is this? Ophthalmologist. Ophthalmologist, twelve nurse practitioners, two physician assistants, three licensed clinical social workers, seven dentists, one hygienist, with a support staff of a hundred and eighty-two. East Arkansas Family Health Center has eleven healthcare delivery sites, including three school-based health centers and an HIV AIDS case management site in Crittenden, Ponce, Phillips, uh, and Mississippi County, serving nineteen thousand four hundred and seventy-two patients, generating over seventy thousand patient visits. This flagship, uh, organization is joint-commissioned, accredited, and is a NCQA Level Three. I don't know what that is, but I know it's something big. Patient-centered medical home. Dr. Jones previously served in the capacity of Medical Director at East Arkansas Family Health Center from nineteen ninety-six until two thousand six and is currently the CEO and Medical Director of East Arkansas Delta AIDS Care Center, ADAC. Dr. Jones not only wears the hat of the CEO, but still practices as a physician. She was once my doctor, but I wasn't a good patient, so she kicked me out. I'm thinking about going back. And thank you. In a community health center, you have to ask if the patient is going to be able to get the prescription. This dual role of CEO/physician requires her to be an activist, a social worker, and a friend. I bet she is. Dr. Jones has served on the Arkansas State Board of Health from nineteen ninety-nine to two thousand eighteen and served as president in two thousand, twenty-eleven. She has been a member of the Arkansas Center for Health Improvement Policy Board since twenty twelve. She is also on the Board of Directors of Community Health Center of Arkansas and served as president from two thousand nine to two thousand, to twenty fourteen and on the Board of Directors at Fidelity National Bank. Past department includes inorga role member of the Arkansas Lottery Commission from twenty oh-nine to twenty eleven. Dr. Jones is a supporter of her community. Currently, she is a member of the Corporate Board of Directors of Southland Greyhound Park and currently serves as Vice President, member of the West Memphis Chamber of Commerce, as a part, as a past board member of the West Memphis Boys and Girls Club. She is a member of the Arkansas Medical Dental Pharmaceutical Society, Arkansas Medical Society, American Medical Association, Crittenden County Medical Society, member of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority and, are they here? And a member of the Earl Church of God in Christ, where she sings in the choir and serves on the Board of Trustees. I bet you sound so pretty. Dr. Susan Moore Jones has won numerous awards. Spirit of Service Award, Clinical Quality Leadership Award, Distinguished Service Award, Healthcare Achievement Award from Omega Psi Phi, twenty fifteen Business of the Year from the West Memphis Chamber of Commerce, Calvin King Economic Development Award, twenty nineteen Jack Geiger, Geiger Vision Award, twenty twenty Citizen of the Year Award from the West Memphis Chamber of Commerce, Health Center Quality Leader designation by Health Resources and Service Administration. But no award is as special as being the mother of Spencer, Stephen, and Jennifer, and the wife of Steve Jones. Your plaque reads, Black History Month twenty twenty-three, Oh Mighty Woman of Valor. Presented to Dr. Susan Moore Jones, CEO, East Arkansas Family Health Center. In appreciation and recognition for your loyal service and love for your patients and dedication to the field of medicine in the city of West Memphis and surrounding areas. Thank you for not being afraid of challenges and for being a conqueror. Marco McClinton, Mayor, West Memphis City Council, Thursday, February sixteen, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you all so much. Um, and special recognition to the mayor and city council and particularly my favorite, I won't say my favorite council, but you all. No, but, uh, thank you all so much, um, for this award and recognition. East Arkansas Family Health Center has been in this community for some forty-nine years and whether we've been on Bond Street or on Seventh Street, we have endeavored to provide accessible, quality, comprehensive healthcare to, to the citizens and surrounding areas. And I hope we've done that in a fine fashion and I think we have. But we're so very honored to be here and I really want to say special kudos to my board, who was very supportive and particularly to my staff. I could not do any of this without my staff and I really want them to stand tonight. Thank you all so much. And also to my biggest cheerleader here, my, my husband, Stephen Jones. He is the biggest cheerleader for me and honey, I thank you so much. And also to my mom and dad. My dad is since deceased, but my mom is still, still with us. She's eighty-seven years old and I will say that we have a site in Helena. And, uh, up until about a year ago, she was still driving, telling me, you know, y'all need to cut the lights on, y'all need to do this and that. I said, well, she said, well, I need to be on the payroll. I'm like, mother, you've always been on the payroll. So thank you all for this award and we look forward to the next fifty years of providing services. And please don't hesitate to contact us for any healthcare needs that you, that you have. Thank you so much and we're so honored.
Okay. Ms. Curtis? I made a mistake. I made a mistake and I need to clear it up.
Yes, ma'am.
I think I made mistakes and, uh, there's somebody else that I want to recognize. Uh, and she's not here, but her daughter is here and her granddaughter is here. I wanted to thank Ms. Minnis, uh, who's always been a mother to me. She helped me. She helped pretty much raise me. And Sharonay Minnis, she graduated from the University of Tennessee and she could have went to work for any other contractor in Memphis, uh, bigger than me, and she opted to come and work for me. Sharonay Minnis, can you please stand up? She's a project manager for me and her mother, who's my sister, Keisha, could you please stand up? She, she has to talk me off the ledge quite often. But thank you. I apologize. Thank you.
This is our opportunity to take pictures and I would like to say to our honorees and anyone else who's here, we do have refreshments in the lobby and we most certainly want you to enjoy yourselves as soon as the meeting is over.
We're going to resume our meeting real quick. Hold, Mr. Groome. Hold one minute, because I need to speak with this council one second. One second after we finish. Can I get a motion second to adjourn? I don't pay by. Oppose, we adjourn.